Good evening, we are now calling the June Martin County Board of Education meeting to order. Could we please rise for Ms. Tahira Wooten and Ms. Erica Sturgill who are our new D1 college football, I mean college softball players. They're gonna lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the highest court with liberty and justice for all.
Meditation, please, Ms. Mason. Just stay.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking you for meaningful conversations. We asking you for guidance and wisdom as we make decisions upon our students and for our staff. And Lord, we just ask that you allow us to grow as a group and nurture us as we go about our duties of this community. In this name we pray, amen.
Amen. You may be seated. And before I ask for approval of the agenda, someone left their infinity keys. If you would, claim those. If not, then I will, is it, it's not you Tahira? Okay, back to our regular scheduled program. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
So move.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Need approval for consent agenda, please?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried, consent agenda approved. And now for my favorite part, Ms. Dolls. We're gonna do student recognition.
My favorite part too. Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we are excited to celebrate achievements of members of the first class of Martin County, graduating class of Martin County High School. And the first group we're gonna celebrate tonight is from our Career Technical Education Department. We'd like to ask Ms. Ward and her students to come up. We have six students who have completed the requirements for their Certified Nursing Assistant I credentials, and this is all before they graduate. Such an opportunity is typically offered at community colleges, hospitals, or healthcare facilities, and our students are accomplishing this while in high school at no cost. The state-approved training for this is Nursing Fundamentals Class, which is taken in the senior year and offered by Martin County Schools for those in the Health Sciences pathway. Students first complete classroom instruction and a hands-on clinical experience and must pass a written competency exam and a practical skills competency exam at the CNA testing facility. Tonight, we're celebrating six of our students of the class of 25 who have achieved their CNA I's. That's Demari Davenport. Avana Vasquez Rojas. Kristy Hyman. Jasmine Staton. And Peyton Rogers, who could not be here with us tonight. So congratulations to each of you and thank you to Ms. Ward.
We have an additional one, Bianca Hernandez, who has just now passed.
Yeah. Sorry, we didn't have, we'll get you to take it to you, Bianca.
She was invited to join us.
Well, great. So we are proud of y'all and thank you, Ms. Ward, for everything you do, bringing your practical experience as a nurse. And every student has told me how much more that brings to this program because of what you bring to it. So thank you for that. And this is just one more example of how our CTE program is preparing our students for their next step. Congratulations. Let's get a photo real quick. Thank you all. Next up, we're celebrating graduating Gator athletes who are continuing their athletic careers after high school. So if we could ask our athletes to come up. I think we have several of them here tonight. And first up tonight, I want to introduce you to Ms. Janaya Dolberry. Janaya has run track all four years and she has committed to continue her career on the track at Mount Olive University. Janaya, tell us what you plan to major in.
Peaceology.
Outstanding. All right. Next up, we have a pair of athletes who without a doubt have left their mark on Gator softball for a long time to come. Played all four years of high school. Erica Sturgill will continue her career at my alma mater, Barton College in Wilson. And Erica, what will you be planning to study?
I'll be studying physical therapy.
Awesome. And her sidekick there, Ms. Tahira Wooten, is taking her skills to Virginia University in Richmond. And what are you studying? All right. And last and certainly not least, we want to recognize some members of the football team who are gonna be working for their spots at North Carolina Wesleyan. Zachariah Hall and Alex Rory couldn't be here tonight, but Mr. Leon Henry is here tonight. So we want to, congratulations and best of luck to you, Leon. And what, what are you studying? Fantastic. So let's give them all another round of applause. Quick picture. And no matter what jersey you wear, you will always be Gators. Just remember that. Thank you.
Can we give our athletes another round of applause for this outstanding, outstanding And now Dr. White, once you catch your breath, superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Purvis. We are winding down a tremendous school year in Martin County Schools. And during the month of July, I'm gonna give you a recap of all the amazing things as I was reflecting last week. We've had so many huge things happen this year. And we actually have another huge announcement that's gonna be coming down the pipe that we have not made the community aware of yet. I'm getting a lot of big eyes out there wondering what it could be, and I'm gonna keep you wondering because this one's big. And we're gonna be notifying the community very, very soon of something absolutely spectacular that we have just learned of this past weekend. But for now, let's focus on our superintendent's report for the previous month. We have had so many celebrations. First of all, our senior awards. I just want to give a shout out to the entire high school team, their administration, their counselors, their teachers, their custodians, every staff member at that high school because senior awards were spectacular. There was over two hours' worth of awards that were given, and no, it was not too long. It was perfect. We were celebrating our children and their accomplishments, and I'm so incredibly proud of the high school team and of the graduating class of 2025. And I do want to give a special shout out. Last year combined, South Creek High School and Riverside High School had around $300,000 in scholarships. This year, the new graduating class, the first ever graduating class of Martin County High School, has over $1.2 million in college scholarships.
I think that deserves a hand.
And that is a testament to the hard work of our children, but to the hard work of the Martin County High School staff. Thank you for pushing our kids, for investing in our kids, and for making sure they get the support they need to reach new heights. So great job to Martin County High School. Our senior walk was absolutely wonderful. Some of our schools even created a special time capsule with their kindergarteners walking in and their seniors coming out. We lined the hallways and just cheered for our seniors. And we also showed all the children from kindergarten through 11th grade in Martin County Schools what their goal is, and that's to walk across that stage and graduate from Martin County High School. Such a wonderful day for our teachers, seeing the students that once lined their hallways in second and third grade now graduating from Martin County High School. So thank you to everybody who had a part in a wonderful senior walk. Also want to give shout out, we had our awards banquet for our staff for our of the years last week. And again, I want to say a special thank you to our HR department, Dr. Bowen, Elizabeth Road, as well as Ms. Sherry Scott for the behind-the-scenes work that went into organizing a very special night to recognize our staff. That's one of my absolute favorite things in the whole world is to celebrate people. Great organizations are made by great people, and we are truly blessed with the best. So just wanted to recognize our Principal of the Year for Martin County Schools, Mr. Grantley Mizell. Our Teacher of the Year for Martin County Schools, Band Director, Ms. Raven Cole. Our Classified Staff Member of the Year, our very own, Mr. Doug Bullock. Our Assistant Principal of the Year, Mr. Christopher Stanton. And our CTE Teacher of the Year, Ms. April Joyner. Congratulations to each of you. We also continued the recognitions with recognizing all of our Teachers of Excellence. Each school had a Teacher of Excellence that were recognized, and I'm telling you, they are just fantastic. So shout out to all of our Teachers of Excellence. We also had many classified staff that were nominated for our Classified Staff Member of the Year. Very thankful for each of these folks and all that they do for Martin County Schools. In addition, we do want to recognize our retirees. This is something that we added to the banquet last year, and we're just so excited. Some of these folks have already retired, some mid-year, some will be retiring at the end of the year, but it was so great to just bring them back and just recognize them. So shout out to all of our retirees. Thank you for your gift to Martin County Schools, for investing in our children for all of these years. We are thankful for your years of service. As we are looking forward to next year, we want to welcome our brand-new band director. Daniel Garcia has been named the next band director for Martin County High School. He is going to be coming in with a wealth of experience, having taught previously at Northside High School. He's also served at Northeast Elementary School. We are so incredibly excited to have his skill set and to be moving our band program forward. He's actually having a meet and greet tonight to get introduced to the students and the parents and start planning for an absolutely stellar marching season next year. Also wanted to give a special thank you to everyone that supported the Rocky Hawk Opry Show. That show did come to Martin County and had agreed previously to donate all the proceeds to the American Cancer Society half and the other half to our very own MCS Brand New Theater Department. So the check was presented during the month of May to Ms. Thomason, our brand-new theater teacher, and she's gonna be able to use that money for her musical productions next year. So thank you to the Rocky Hawk Opry for this very generous opportunity to bring the show to Martin County for our community, but also to donate this generous gift to our very own theater department. Speaking of our theater department, we had the first-ever middle-school theater musical performance during the month of May, and if you missed it, you really missed something spectacular. These kids were phenomenal. Their talent was actually mind-blowing, especially for the first time we've ever done this. Shout out to Ms. Thomason, to the whole crew. It actually was featured on WITN as well. Thank you to Chris Cook, who actually reported on that story, did a wonderful job. Shout out to all of Riverside Middle School, Martin Innovative Middle School, Ms. Russian, Ms. Thomason, and the whole team. A lot was invested in this show. And I want you to understand something. It's not just about the acting. The children learn about set design, creating the sets, the lighting, the costumes, every aspect of putting on a musical. Different children had behind-the-scenes part because everybody's got a talent. And so it was just a great way to watch our students shine. Wonderful production. Also want to say thank you to Wright Flight of Martin County, the Martin County Sheriff's Office for providing such an exceptional opportunity for our students. Our sixth graders who completed the Wright Flight program within the school environment were then able to actually go up and tour Martin County in a plane. It's a wonderful experience. We had many of our children complete the program and just rave reviews. What an opportunity. You see our children there, sitting in the pilot's seat, actually taking a flight over our county. Phenomenal. Thank you so much to Drew Robinson and the Sheriff's Department for all that they do. Want to give a special shout out. We have some amazing teachers, and Ms. Elizabeth Muller, who is a social studies teacher at Riverside Middle School, has been chosen as one of an elite group of educators in the state. She is going to be a 2025 Freedom Fellows. This fellowship will provide teachers with tools and resources to help students understand our state's history and the important role played in the American Revolution. We are so excited. This was a very competitive process, and we are truly blessed with the best with Ms. Muller and what she brings to Riverside Middle School. So congratulations to her 2025 Freedom Fellows. Is her husband here? Um, I've seen him. She does have a very proud husband who happens to be the principal of South Creek Elementary School. We also wanted to give a shout out, we could not do what we do in any capacity without our bus drivers. Let me say that again. The day starts and ends with our bus drivers. We have folks that are so dedicated, so committed, and so I just wanted to take a moment to shout out all our bus drivers, but to recognize our local bus rodeo winners. Special shout out to Antonio Peel, who was second place in our local rodeo, Val Whitley, who was third place in our local rodeo, and Jody Andrews, who was first place in our local rodeo. He actually went on to the district competition, and he has placed seventh. The top seven in the district competition, which is from across the entire region, actually go on to the state competition. So Mr. Andrews is gonna be representing Martin County Schools tomorrow, no, excuse me, Wednesday in the state bus driving competition. So this will be the state rodeo. Congratulations to Mr. Andrews for placing seventh in the entire region, and we want you on Wednesday to send up all your prayers, positive vibes, and goodwill to him as he represents us in the state competition. Also wanted to give a shout out to Champ Tice. This kid amazed me, okay? He competed in the 2A State Golf Tournament, and he finished 30th out of 96, which is awesome in its own right, but guys, it was during the monsoon, okay? It rained the entire time these kids were playing, to the point that I was shocked that they continued to play, but he persevered and really represented us so very well. On Tuesday, he finished 11th out of 96, and just was really proud. During this time, he shot an 88 on Monday, but two inches of rain fell. Can you imagine playing golf in two inches of rain? So I just wanted to give a shout out to him, as well as Mr. Nguyen, our golf coach. He does such a good job with these students, just giving them a great experience, a great opportunity, some who've never had the chance to play golf before. So thank you to Mr. Nguyen, and congratulations to Champ for making it all the way to the state championship. Also tonight, we had the opportunity to see Mr. Leon Henry. He is, he went to the 2A State Track Meet. He did very, very well, had a big finish for an awesome season. He did a fantastic job representing Martin County Schools, and we're very, very proud of him. We did want to also recognize, here you see a picture of our golf team, our tennis team did a fantastic job this year. Thank you so much, Mr. and Mrs. Connor, for coaching that team. Our softball team, fantastic season. This is the second year in a row that they have made it to the third and fourth round of the state playoffs. We truly have a fantastic team. And, you know, Proquinn's County was playing in baseball for the state championship, but Martin County beat Proquinn's County in the TIC tournament at the end of the year. So Proquinn's County, you know, has a fantastic baseball team, but I do want to recognize our baseball team because that's pretty spectacular as well. So shout out to all of our spring sports for just, you know, representing us well, both on and off the field. Also wanted to shout out our CTE program. You had the opportunity to meet some of these students. We tell you that Martin offers more, and this is an example of what the early college program is doing for Martin County Schools, okay? These children are graduating with their Certified Nursing Assistant. This means that they can graduate right now and go to work making a living wage to support their families if they so choose, or they're getting a head start on their nursing career, going ahead and getting this part of it behind them. So shout out to these students. Thank you to Ms. Ward. Ms. Ward does so much for our Health Sciences program, and we're just so thankful for the opportunities she's given our children. Before graduation, our kids are Certified Nursing Assistants. That's a big deal. Martin definitely offers more. You've heard about it, you're gonna continue to hear about it. And breaking news, we've announced this in the last several weeks, band will now begin in elementary school. We want the best band program in the state of North Carolina, and so we're gonna start building it earlier. Band will now begin in fourth grade at each of our elementary schools. So all fourth and fifth grade students will have the opportunity to participate in the band program. The hope is that this will continue to grow our already-growing program. We've got some of the biggest numbers at some of our schools that we've ever had, and we really want to continue this trajectory. So this will be a great opportunity, starting this fall, for band to begin in elementary school. We are also bringing back wrestling. The exact date is unknown, but early 2000 perhaps was the last time Martin County Schools offered wrestling. So we will be starting at the middle school next year. Thank you to Crystal Horn, who actually won a grant for the wrestling mats. Wrestling is a very expensive program. The mats are quite expensive, and we were able to get a grant to offset the cost of these mats, and so actually saw the final proof today. It's on the way. So we are excited to bring wrestling to the middle school next year, and then we want that to evolve into the high school. So some people have asked, well, what about the high school? It's coming. We're starting in middle school, building the program, and then we're gonna continue it on to high school. And you see here, Ms. Horn in this picture, we were so excited to present her the check and that grant award that she won for over $11,000 to help us purchase those mats. We are also introducing the new Martin Innovative Elementary Program. This will be the steam-driven program that will be a feeder to Martin Innovative Middle School. You've heard about the dynamic innovative program known as MENS all year. Spectacular opportunity, feeds into our awesome early college program that you just saw, some of the results of that. So now we are starting a pilot program at our elementary school. The application is slated to close on Wednesday, June 4th. So if this is something you are interested in for your child, we will have a pilot in third, fourth, and fifth grade. It will be housed at Williamson Primary. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. We would be glad to answer those for you. The application is available online. Parents, two years ago, when I came here, you asked for more engaging summer opportunities. Parents, we listened. I want to give a shout out to Ms. Raina Beach, Aseem McGill, our Andrea Lilly, our entire curriculum department, Ms. Gwen Houston, Ms. Kim Lilly. A ton of time has gone into planning very carefully crafted summer camps. There is barely a week this summer that there is not some sort of summer camp going on, from STEM camps for elementary students to score camps to AIG camps, Health Sciences, MENS camps, Industrial Trades camps, STEAM camps, swim camps, you name it, and we're probably offering it. We have something for everybody because we want to keep our students engaged and active over the summer. Parents, these camps are on our website, they're on our Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. If you have any issues, all the registration is there, but if you have any issues, please reach out because we really want to keep our students engaged over the summer, and we want to support our families with things for students to do as well this summer. So if you have any questions, reach out, but we have tons of opportunities that are just exceptional. And by the way, all these opportunities are free. We're taking our high school students on a three-day college tour. We are taking students to East Carolina University to learn how to swim with trained instructors. All the camps that we're offering are 100% free to our families, so please take advantage of them. Speaking of free, we also have an anti-bullying class coming up for our parents. Parents, mark your calendar, Thursday, June 19th at 6:00 PM at our Innovation Campus. We are gonna be doing a parent education series on bullying and how to help parents understand how they can assist their child. This is gonna be a great opportunity, parents educating you in knowing how to help your child if they are being bullied, understanding what bullying really is as well. This will also be offered for our staff in addition. So parents, we would love to see you at this training on Thursday, June 19th at 6:00 PM. Our school choice deadline has passed. May 31st was the last time, the last day to submit your school choice request. We will be working through those in the coming weeks, and we will notify each family via email if their requests were granted. Of course, if you have a question prior to that time, don't hesitate to reach out. We currently have vacancies in Martin County Schools. If you would like to come and work with the best, please check out our website, see the vacancies that we have available. We take pride in offering the absolute best professional development, the best support, and in case you hadn't heard, Martin offers more. So come to Martin County, work with a great group of people who would love to support you and your professional growth. Parents, be reminded that we are offering a summer feeding program. We're offering breakfast and lunch. Sites open to the public are South Creek Elementary School and E.J. Hayes Elementary School. Here are your dates, June 9th through 22nd, I'm sorry, 27th, June 9th through June 27th, then July 7th through July 31st. These are completely free meals. Walk-ins are accepted at these locations. We are trying to support our children through the summer to make sure everybody's got enough to eat. So come on out to these locations. We would love to feed you. First day of school for our students is Monday, August 25th. Phew, I'm getting some looks on that one. They're like, we haven't even closed this year down, but we want to be prepared. That's what makes education the best profession in the world. Every year, we get a new start, and it's so exciting to be thinking, to be planning for the best year ever. So parents, go ahead and mark your calendar. No vacations the week of August 25th because we want our kiddos back, and we are already planning for a phenomenal year. Speaking of that, the calendar's online. So parents, as you're planning your vacations, check out the school calendar. Make sure you're planning around the school calendar so that our kiddos can be in school. If they're not here, they're not learning, and we want them in that seat. So check out the dates online, and importantly, enjoy your summer. We want our kids to go home. They don't really have to go home because we've got a camp every week, so they can really stay if they would like to. But enjoy your summer. We want you to be safe. We want our kids to stay engaged this summer. Know that we're here to support you throughout the summer, and we're already planning for an amazing school year next year. Thank you, parents, for entrusting your children to us. They're our greatest gift, and we don't take that lightly. We appreciate the opportunity to serve our families. So thank you for the gift of your children. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. White. A lot going on. We'll now move into our information action items, starting with Ms. Lilly, board policies.
Hello. We had a few board policies for y'all to review this time, and the first list that we have here is mainly just minor changes that were to wording or to references that needed to be updated. And then our second set of them here, we have some, like Policy 1710, they clarified language, but they also added a Title IX Coordinator into Section C and D, and Policy 1720 and 20- into section C and D, and policy 1720 and 25, they reverted back, um, to versions that were reinstated earlier, um, and we did updates. And they also updated some, uh, requirements and some definitions that were in those. Um, also with 1726, they reinstated that one with some minor updates. Policy 1735, they changed terminology to match the Title IX, um, regulations. And policy 2500, option B, they're asking us to rescind that policy. And then 2500, option A, that would be the new policy to replace it. And then the last one there was just updating language, um, with policy and put notes. Do y'all have any questions?
Questions?
I had a que- I have two questions. The first one is with 1310, 4002, the parental involvement, and mine is more for my education. On page two, it says, "The principal must effectively communicate to parents the manner in which textbooks are used to implement the school's curricular objectives." Are we still using textbooks?
Yes, and that also includes digital textbooks.
Okay, so like when they have the notebooks and...
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That was my question with that one. And then the other one I had is seven, 335, is that the social media? Um, and I just need Mr. McPherson to listen to this one. So on page three, it says that employees shall not accept current students as friends or followers. And I want to know if that relates to board members, because I stay on social media. So it's, on page three, it's D, it says posting to social media sites. And it's under number one, but it's the second paragraph. Employees shall not accept current students as friends or followers or otherwise connect with students on personal social media sites without parental permission.
So under this policy, there is a distinguishing feature. We're specifically speaking to employees, and that's not inclusive of board members.
Thank you.
If you would like it to include board members, I think we'd have to say "the" board, so...
Okay. I just want to know if that was, it stuck out with me. So I don't think anybody else, Ms. Lilly, has any questions. Right?
Thank you.
So you want to stay up here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we're going to talk about the AIG plan approval?
Yes. And I'll have a couple more. Ms. Kim Lilly and Ms. Gwen Houston are joining me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
We're going to have Lilly and Lilly and Houston.
Yes. So, um, thank you for the opportunity to present our Martin County Schools' AIG plan tonight for the 2025-2028 school years. This plan represents a comprehensive and forward-thinking approach to gifted education in our district. At the heart of our work, there is a clear vision, and that is Martin County Schools is committed to creating an intellectually stimulating environment that develops talent, fosters growth, ignites curiosity, and empowers gifted students to reach their full potential as lifelong learners and critical thinkers. The AIG plan reflects this vision through a strategic framework that strengthens every stage of gifted education, from early talent development to enhanced opportunities in secondary grades. And tonight, we have the highlights of standards, um, one through six that we're going to go through, and Ms. Houston's going to take one through three, and Ms. Lilly's going to take four through six.
Um, so standard one talks about student identification. We have developed a plan that is not only a clear and equitable screening and referral process through, um, K-12, but it also encompasses, uh, strategies to ensure that all of our demographics and our subgroups are represented through culturally linguistically and economically diverse students. Um, and this is all done with a learner profile and a identification rubric that will go through our needs determination teams and our AIG team. Um, standard two talks about a comprehensive program within the total school community. We are looking to use a multi-tiered, um, services to, from pullouts to enrichments to AP and honors courses to early acceleration, also flexible grouping, equitable resource distribution, and consistent, consistent services across the department collaboration. Oh, I'm sorry. And communication of the AIG plan in a digital format as well as paper with various community and parent nights for all stakeholders. And the last one is, that I'm talking about, is the differentiated curriculum and instruction. We're, um, expanding upon the adopted standard course of study through, um, enrichment, extension, and acceleration. We're headed down, um, more project-based learning, interdisciplinary units, and problem-solving activities that create that 21st century skills that our learners need. And that's with the hope that we're not just giving kids some stuff to do, but creating lifelong learners. Um, the curriculum and instruction will be ongoing, and it will be reflective, and this will start as early as K-2 with early childhood, um, with early, uh, talent development.
Um, standard four focuses on personnel and professional development. Um, so with, um, our AIG, we will have an AIG licensed, um, teacher slash coordinator, and, um, they will participate in planning. They will also participate in professional development that they will provide for our teachers, um, and also focus on the implementation of the AIG plan over the course of the next few years. Um, we will also have AIG teachers that will be licensed, who will also help support our students and the instruction within the classroom. Um, we also are going to, um, have PD on giftedness, so like a teacher just learning about how can I support my students who are gifted. Also, our students who are twice, um, exceptional, um, and learning some differentiation, um, strategies as well. Um, we also will offer some assistance for some staff members to go through this next cohort of attain, obtaining their, um, AIG license, um, which will help expand their, their leadership abilities, but also their own professional development, supporting their students. And also, we'll have professional development and coaching cycles, also MTSS. A lot of times, there's a misconception that MTSS is for students who struggle, but really it's for all students. So we want to be able to offer that enrichment opportunity for our students. So that's a big piece we want to focus on as well. With standard five, this is on the partnerships. Um, so we want to make sure we're engaging the parents in the, the meetings, um, when their students are involved. We want to make sure we're focusing on the differentiation educational plans, also the individualized education plans, and also the talent development plans for those students who are not quite AIG, but they do, um, need some talent development. Um, we also would like to have an AIG parent group, um, that we really, um, build as a, as a nice, um, layer of support, and also that they can help us with enriching the program. Um, also forming an advisory board that can offer support throughout the course of the cycle of the AIG plan, so we can enhance pieces as we go as well. Um, also, we want to make sure we're utilizing the community and the talents in our community to help support AIG and also help with the college readiness piece. And lastly, we're going to make sure we're communicating, um, via the, the website with the AIG plan, also different parent nights. We want to make sure we're having a court, over the course of the year, so families and children can come in for that as well. With standard six, this one is on program accountability. So we want to make sure that we are monitoring the plan all along to make sure that we are tweaking things as need be. Um, we all, we're looking at student data, because we want to make sure our students are continuing to grow, um, as they're receiving services as well. Um, that's very important that we get stakeholder feedback throughout that process. Um, also, we want to make sure we're looking at the budget, making sure we're using funds appropriately that enhance the program, um, the vision of the program. We will also disaggregate the, the data to make sure our different subgroups, population of students are, are showing the outcomes that we intend for them to see. We want to make sure we're evaluating the program, and we want to make sure that parents have rights and they are, um, protected, and they also are involved in the decision-making of that pertains to their student. We want to make sure they're very active. Over the next course of the three years of this new plan, we want to make sure that we, um, take the feedback that DPI will give us after we submit the plan in July. We want to take that feedback and enhance our plan in ways that they say, as well as we, the plan may be tweaked throughout the cycle, depending on legislation as that, as that changes.
So this plan is much more than just a compliance document for us. This is a living framework of how we want to identify, serve, and support gifted learners in Martin County schools. It also reflects our belief that talent exists in every zip code, and our responsibility to cultivate it, um, through thoughtful, inclusive, and rigorous educational practices. We're excited to share these components with you tonight, and we want to continue to build a gifted education program that truly reflects the potential of our students. Um, so at this time, we'd like to ask if you have any questions for us.
Ms. Pat?
Um, how do you find working with the Innovative Middle School, High School, and AIG students? What percentage of students that are in that are AIG, and does it affect how you, how you reach them?
That is not, I mean, you don't have to be AIG to be in that program.
Right. Are most of our gifted students a part of that? That was what I was...
Some of them are, yes. And then we either push in or pull out, and pull out groups to work with them.
Do you just mean wherever they are?
On their time. So basically, they rotate around the district, and they support the students based on the, the time that's equitable at that school.
And about how many AIG students do we have? So roughly 176? And how much staff do we have to cover?
We have one teacher coordinator. We do have a halftime position that's open. We have not filled.
Anyone else?
And I just want to add to that, too. With the staff, this, we have one pullout teacher. So that's our enrichment teacher, who's actually pulling out those children. But we're also differentiating within the classroom. That's something we've really pushed over the last two years, and something the state actually recommends, is that that differentiation occur in the classroom, so that we are pulling those students in like groups with, so if we're talking about AIG, the other advanced children are being served within that classroom as a, a separate group as well. But we're also very proud of our pullout program that offers that enrichment beyond. So they do get services inside the classroom that also are those enrichment separate groups for the advanced students. Um, but then we have the pullout opportunity in addition to that.
Do we have teachers, other teachers that are certified AIG?
Yes.
But there, there's not positions for them?
We do, but we also offer, part of the plan, we offer professional development for all teachers. And some of our teachers have the AIG certi- certification and want to remain in the regular classroom.
Right.
They got that certification in order to just be a better teacher for those advanced learners within the classroom, um, which is, which is great and something that we absolutely support.
I think there's sometime, uh, sometimes a public perception of there being, um, differentiation means it's for your students that have problems, and it's not.
That's right.
It's for everybody.
Yep. Great point.
But just for clarification, we do have AIG students who are not in the Innovative program.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they still may be, you know, AIG.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
All right.
So we'd like to ask the board for approval tonight for the plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, got a motion?
Yes.
Got, properly moved and seconded to approve the AIG plan. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion, carrot. Approval. Thank you so much. Now we have Mr. McPherson, project manager, approval.
All right, board. Um, we have concluded our negotiations with Ms. Barath.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the do not exceed price for his services for the next four years, um, during the school construction project of your high school is not to exceed two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. There are some possible, uh, additions for what happens after construction, if you want to keep him around. There's, uh, as an add-on and a fixed price, but generally speaking, this is the first step in having your project manager. And after this, your next contract will be with your design building. Um, so I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions before, um, I entertain a motion? You know, we've received it with our weekly updates from Dr. White. Um, any questions for? Then I would ask for a motion to approve Mr. Barath as our project manager, and Mr. McPherson has given us, um, what the cap is.
So, Mark, so?
They're properly moved and seconded to, um, retain the services of Mr. Barath for our project manager. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion, carrot.
Board, you have a copy of this in your inbox, if you need to reference it.
Thank you so much, Mr. McPherson, and we're ready to start building.
Yep.
Okay, of Dr. White and team, state of the district infrastructure, and the five-to-ten-year plan.
Thank you, Chair Purvis. Um, as we started digging into the development of this work, um, the team is actually going to come in later, because this is going to be a multi-meeting presentation, and, and tonight is just the foundation. So I always say you have to know where you are in order to know where you're going. And tonight is about really making sure that we dig into what we have, um, what the needs are in each structure that we do have, uh, looking at how we're currently using it, and just getting a vision, not only for, for right now and tomorrow, but for ten years down the road, to make sure that, that we are planning for our, our buildings. We've got our strategic plan in place now, and the goal of this is that we create a multi-year infrastructure plan. So ensuring that we're not reactive or only reactive to the needs of our buildings and our, for example, HVAC units and all of those structures, but that we have a proactive plan to replace ahead of necessity. All right? So let's just dig into where we are. We have to know where we are to know where we're going. So currently, we have eight schools. Um, Williamson Primary, EJ Hayes, Rogers, Jamesville, and South Creek Elementary Schools. We have Riverside Middle School, South Creek Middle School, and then Martin County High School. Now, in addition to that, we do have the adjunct building of the Innovation Campus, but that also is a part of Martin County High School. So we're going to dig into that and talk about that just a little bit as well. So let's start with Williamson Primary. Now, some of these things you have heard in our budget presentation to the county commissioners, but I wanted to dig in just a little bit more and make sure that we're all on the same page with, um, our buildings, the years that they were built. Uh, answer any questions that you might have. Um, Mr. Edwards is, is also here and has been a part of the development of this, uh, initial work as well. Uh, I did have him actually go back through each building and recalculate the student capacity, just to make sure that we had the most, uh, accurate numbers. There were some buildings that we're looking at building occupancy instead of student capacity. Those are two different things. How many people can fit in a building versus how many we can educate in a building? So I wanted to make sure that we were looking at the apples to apples. How many students can we educate in each of our buildings, okay? So at Williamson Primary, this school was originally built in 1975 with some additions in 84 and 89. We current, have current capital needs there, which we're presented to you, and we're going to go through again, at about 1.2 million dollars. Our current capacity at that school is 538 students. And again, we're not looking at occupancy, we're looking at student capacity. And our current enrollment at that school is 369, and that does include four pre-kindergarten classes. Total enrollment of 369. Now, sometimes you see a different number. That's because when the state's looking at things, they're actually looking at K-2 enrollment for that school. Sometimes they do not include pre-K in their numbers, because that is a program that's actually funded separately from, uh, the allotment. So if you do see a number that's less than that 369, that is the reason. But when we're looking at the total, um, educational use of the building, that number is 369. And as we're looking at those needs, this is the part that's going to be familiar to you. This is where we were looking at those requests from our maintenance department, from the school improvement team, um, from the principal of that school. So you can see here, when you're looking at these requests, that's where we're getting that 1.2 million dollars. Um, one of the big things we've requested this year is upgraded entryway for several of our schools, including Williamson Primary. That, and what this will do, instead of being, yes, we have the buzz-in system, where parents or, or guests to the schools have to buzz in, but what this would do is create a secure entry, which is recommended by the state, where parents are forced, or whoever's visiting the school, is forced directly into the office. And so that is what, um, rather than walking into the building when you're buzzing in and then having to turn and go into the office, you would walk directly into the office. And so you're going to see that throughout several of the school upgrades, and so that's part of the cost. Um, there is some painting that needs to be done throughout the school. And then we do, another big cost is several HVAC units that do need to be replaced throughout And then we do, another big cost is several HVAC units that do need to be replaced throughout the school. In addition, there are some mobile units that need to be replaced. Those are those classroom mobile units outside that also need to be replaced. And so that was another larger cost that you see here. I won't go through each thing, but did just kind of want to recap you on what the needs are and where we did get that total cost analysis for Williamson Primary School. As we're looking at EJ Hayes, this school was built in 1952 with the cafeteria addition in 58 and the media center in 2000. We have current capital needs of $1.3 million at that school. And our current capacity is 555 students. We currently have 291 students enrolled. EJ Hayes is our oldest school in the district. So it does have some of our largest building needs. When you look at what those needs are, again, I won't go through all of these. I did go through them in-depth in our meeting with the county commissioners. But a huge cost at this school is we need new windows and we need new window frames. We also need upgraded bathrooms at this school. We have original bathrooms at EJ Hayes. And so if, you know, as we continue to operate that school, we do need to look at getting these things updated for our, for our students. So those are a couple of the very large costs. There are some HVAC things that we need to look at there as well. And then some furniture needs as well that were requested. But, but the big, big expense right now would be the windows as well as the bathroom upgrades. All right, we have Rogers Elementary School, which was built in 62. Had additions in 82. In 2000, we had the media addition. And in 2014, we had a multipurpose room addition. We have 988,000 in current capital needs. We have a current capacity of 390 students and a current school enrollment of 219 students. These are the big needs at Rogers Elementary School. Again, those windows and frames are a big part of that expense. That's something that we do want to begin, you know, to be planning for. In addition to, we do have two mobile units at that school that we also have to keep on the radar for replacement as well. And then that secure entrance also applies to Rogers where families, when they are admitted into the school, would walk directly into a secure office versus into an open building. So we are requesting that additional construction capital money from the county commissioners. Jamesville Elementary was built in 1974 with addition in 2014, which was a bathroom addition. Current capital needs there are 435,000. Our current capacity at Jamesville is 437 students. And our current enrollment is 215 students. When we're looking at the needs that are currently at Jamesville, the HVAC upgrades would be one of the biggest costs for that school. We also want the secure entrance for that school as well. Considering South Creek Elementary, it was built in 2000. Current capital needs are $1.3 million. Current capacity is 609 students and our current enrollment is 343. That, this is also a pre-K school, so as is Jamesville Elementary. But that 343 does include our pre-K students. So if you sometimes see some different numbers there, we do have two classrooms of pre-K students there. So that 343 includes our pre-K students. When we are looking at South Creek Elementary, we do need to update the fire alarm system there, which is at $222,000. So that is on our radar to replace. It is in our current 10-year plan that we've been working on with maintenance. Another large expense there is, it is time to update the painting throughout that building as well as we do have to keep the HVAC chiller on our radar. That's one of the biggest expenses you can have to replace for any school. So that is on our radar, that, that need is going to be coming down the pipe. So again, we're trying to be proactive instead of reactive and plan in advance for these things. South Creek Middle School was built in 1975. We had some updates in 82, 2000, and 2004 with covered walkways, the football press box in 2012, softball field in 14, as well as a multipurpose area. The current capital needs for South Creek Middle School are $2.1 million. Our current capacity of the school is 690 and our current enrollment is 144. As we're looking at what our needs are at South Creek Middle School, the windows there are a, a big concern. There are some, some metal frames there that have rusted. And so we, we are needing to look at those windows. In addition, there are 10 units at that school that are on, on the agenda to be replaced. Several of those have gone out. In fact, one has been out part of this school year because the part was on back order. So we are trying to be, you know, get on a replacement cycle for those. That is a need at that school. The roof seal was also, it does have some water issues as well. Tell you about those in a second. The asphalt areas outside the school, if you've been in that parking lot, you know what I'm talking about. We do need to completely redo that parking lot, which would be a cost of about $650,000. It is a large parking lot, so that's why you see that larger number there. But it is, but it is a need. Something that's not listed here, but I did want to make you aware of, there are water issues at that school where when it, when you get a torrential rain, water is going in the doors. That is something that the maintenance team is working on. They are getting some quotes, getting some folks to come in and look at that. So I can't tell you right now how much that can cost. But I can tell you, as can Mr. Howard, that that is a need. We have had that happen a few times this year. The water does enter the building. And so we are looking at what we need to do. If, if you go to South Creek Middle, you'll see those sandbags sitting by the front doors. And that is the reason for that. If you get a torrential rain, we do have some issues there with flooding. So we are working on that and we're going to be getting a, a plan in place to address that. Mr. Edwards is working on it. When we look at Riverside Middle School, it was built in 2012. The current capital needs are about a million dollars. It can house 670 students and it has a current enrollment of 339. When we're looking at the school, the, it is time, you know, 2012 is when that school was painted. And so it is time to look at repainting that entire school. As well as the chiller replacement at that school is also on our radar, $850,000. So those two things are the major expenses. You can see the, the very much shorter list because that is such a newer school compared to some of our others. Martin County High School was built in 1974. In 77, the auditorium was added. In 87, we have football bleachers and the press box. And our current capital needs, you know what? We don't really need to talk about that because we're already addressing those. I don't know if, if the community has heard, but we did win a grant for $62 million. So we are going to be building a new Martin County High School. So we're not going to dig into the $5 million in capital needs that were at that school. But if you'll remember, it was about $5 million in capital needs that were at the current Martin County High School. So we are super excited to have our project manager in place, our construction company and architect in place. And great things are, are happening for the children of Martin County for many, many years to come. Our current capacity at that building is 710 and our current enrollment is 722. Now, that does fluctuate. At the beginning of the year, that was closer to 750. You know, as kids move in and move out. But that is the latest enrollment that I have as of today. And please be reminded that when, yes, you see that capacity of 710 and then the 722, but we share this campus with Martin County High School. So we have about 600 children a day on this campus. So all 600 children aren't here at one time, but every period, we are running buses back and forth. So that there are many children here throughout the day. So all 722 students are not at the Martin County High School campus. Many of those students are here while some of those, while many of those students are there. Which brings us to our innovation campus. This was actually built in 74 but had the major renovation in 2021. Our current capital needs here are about a million dollars, and I'll talk to you about that in a second. Our current student capacity is 375. Now, if you look at building occupancy, we can obviously hold many, many more students than that. But we're looking at classroom capacity because this is a, a large space. So the building capacity is closer to like 1,600, but the student educational capacity is at 375. And again, our enrollment for the high school is at 722. So when we're looking at this building, we do need to seal the roof over on the central office side. So that's part of that cost. And then some smaller things, like we do have, we are expanding our CTE. I'll hear about that all the time. So small things like running a, a line to feed the animals, a water line. We do need some tile in a certain space here. There were some acoustic panels requested. The roof on the east side of the building, we do need to look at. That does need to be replaced. And then our parking lot. If you notice, we do struggle out here with potholes. Mr. Edwards is constantly trying to get ahead of that. But that is a need at this building. And so we do need to look at our parking lot upgrades, which would be a rather hefty expense. But for the amount of use that this building is getting, that would definitely be a great investment and something that Mr. Edwards and his team are working on so that we could prevent those. So when we're looking at our totals by school, and I do want to preface this to where I've tried to break out because some things are additional now that were not presented at the county commission because these are new needs that Mr. Edwards asked him to be very thorough. You know, I've shared with you in your weekly updates that we are working on this 10-year plan, that we are really digging into each of our buildings and trying to just really understand what our needs are, what our needs are going to be, trying to know them before they even come to us. So if you see a school like Jamesville that's added, that's because we had some new things come up for that school. Some things that may not have made the original budget. But, but in looking at 10 years down the road in our infrastructure, things that Mr. Edwards and maintenance felt like we should add as we are planning. So when you look at the total needs, I won't go through all of them, but you can see, see the math. The schools, if they have something added, that was something that Mr. Edwards felt that as we are planning, and I do have that linked in here and, and you each will have a copy of this so you can see what those things were that were added. If they have the plus side and then the total, that's because there were some things added to their total capital needs. But overall, the total capital needs for our school building is a little over $10 million as we're looking at the comprehensive needs across each of our school buildings. Now, I want you to also understand, this is for our school buildings. Right now, what we have focused on are the buildings that house children. What we are, have not dug deeply into as of yet is our, for example, our, our bus garage, our maintenance department. Those facilities, I'm going to talk to you about those. But right now, as we're looking at our capital costs, I just wanted to start here as far as the capital cost for our schools. So if we're looking and thinking about our strategic planning, again, over the next 10 years, if we base our needs on what we have previously received from the county commissioners. So typically, they've given us between 555,000 to 655,000 a year. So if we look at an average of that, you know, around $600,000 a year, it would take us 17 years to address the needs that we have right now. So what we want to do is get a proactive plan because we want a 10-year plan, but we know some of these things cannot wait 17 years. And when we look at past infrastructure plans, we haven't always done everything that was in those plans. And so I want to create, work with you guys to create a plan, a vision that we feel good about and really get a game plan to make sure in the next 10 years, we are, you know, I've made no secret, we need a new EJ Hayes Elementary School. We needed a new Martin County High School. We got it. Thank you, Jesus. Now we need a new, we need to look at EJ Hayes. That is our oldest building. There are a lot of needs there. So work in, and, and I believe that our county commission wants to support our school system. I truly believe that. They are, you know, we are working hard to, to try to get a hospital back for our community. And as soon as we can get that in place, I truly believe the county commission is behind us and they want to support our school system. So as we're moving forward, you know, that is something in the coming weeks, months, that we need to talk about. Well, what about a new EJ Hayes? And what would that look like? How would that building help us to move forward? Okay? So I just kind of wanted to give you an estimate of that. Let's look at some of our other buildings that we actually have. Our additional buildings, we have our transportation and maintenance, which was built in 1984. Our old central office, which was built in 1936. The EJ Hayes Alumni Building, which was built in 1931. The Everett School, which was built in 1957. The auxiliary building, which is by the old middle school, that little building off to the side, that was built in 56. So I, I bring these buildings to you because we know that we're working on Everett School. We're currently accepting bids for the old Everett's building because that will be a cost savings to get that off of our books because we will no longer be paying insurance or any fees for that school. So we're currently in the process of that. I also would like the board to look at the auxiliary building, the one that's by the old middle school. I think we need to get that off our books. That building is not functioning for us in any way. So I would like to bring that to the board next and ask that we, as we did with the Everett's building, move forward with getting that off of our, off of our budget. When considering the old central office, we are looking at several out-of-the-box things for this building. Again, this is about planning and dreaming. One thing that we have talked about is the possibility of a teachage. A teachage is low-cost apartments for teachers that are working in our school system. Beginning teachers, you know, you hear a lot about those salaries in the news and it is, it is difficult to find affordable housing. And so we do have some folks that are coming to partner with us for free and just take a look at that building and see, could this be a teachage? Could this be something that we could offer to support recruitment of teachers to Martin County schools? We're also looking at some things like, again, this is dreaming. This is not us saying we are going to do this, but this is us exploring, developing a 10-year plan. So the possibility of something like employee daycare. Could that be a great location to house a daycare for our employees? Daycare is incredibly expensive. So if we could, again, that would be a great recruitment tool because we could offer, hopefully, a lower-cost daycare option for our employees. And, and we actually have some folks that have reached out about possibly partnering with us in that. So we are that building right now. I want us to pause. I'm not in a hurry to get that off of our books because there could be potential to use that building for good for the entire school system and really our entire community. So I'll be bringing more to you about that in the coming months over the next year. And again, I just want to make it clear, this is not things we say we're doing, but this is about dreaming big, having a vision, listening to the needs of our community and our teachers, and then trying to put things in place to address those needs. So when we're thinking about a 10-year plan overview, we're not going to get into this tonight. This is the next step. So we got to look at our current considerations. What schools have our highest enrollment? What schools have our lowest enrollment? What buildings have the greatest need of repair? So what do we need to look at first as we're creating these 10-year plans? Are the things that we need to reorganize in our current layout of our budget? What buildings are the oldest? We know that right now, EJ Hayes is the oldest building in our fleet of schools. Community engagement. Where's our greatest engagement? Where do we need to support more community engagement? What can we do structurally to produce greater opportunities for our students? So are there structural shifts that we could make that would give greater opportunity for students? Or for teachers, like I mentioned, and employee daycare. That could be a structural shift that could be a benefit to our teachers or the teachage. Technology. Technology can be very expensive, particularly in some of our older schools, to support and making sure that we have everything updated and upgraded. So what structures are most outdated with technology? That's something Ms. Bennett is going to be working with you on. What technology infrastructure needs will we encounter over the next 10 years? So looking down the road and knowing, okay, in year five, we're going to have to completely rewire school A. So we need to be planning for that now. And will there be money for that then? Staffing needs. What schools are easiest to staff? What schools are most difficult to staff? And then cross-reference that with all of the other categories. So cross-reference the staffing needs with the technology needs, with the community engagement, with our other current considerations. So these are the things that we are going to be working on. And this is not an overnight thing. It's not like in the next two weeks, we're going to have a 10-year plan. But we're going to dig into this and really make a, a 10-year structural plan over the next several months. Like with our strategic plan, that took about eight months to actually complete and get a really strong vision and plan for, for. and get a really strong vision and plan for the next five years for our school system. And so that's what we're going to be doing here. Our goal is to start now and then have a five-year goal. And then in 2035, to kind of get us on track. Right now, we're way out at that 17-year mark. We need to get us within the 10-year plan where our needs can be conquered within those 10 years. When we get beyond the 10 years, it's just not feasible for waiting 17 years to address a need that we have right now. So as we do this, we're going to do like our amazing board always does and put children first. And remember that education is the most powerful weapon that we can use to change the world. And we're truly doing that right here in Martin County every single day. So we're going to be strategic planning for a brighter future. I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, any questions?
Do they still have water problems at Winston Primary?
Yes, they do. This year, I've not been aware of any flooding. We have had flooding at South Creek Middle School, but there still are water issues, yes ma'am.
Any other questions?
I'll just give you a heads up since you can't see in the back of your head, the daycare is a winner, employee daycare.
Oh, y'all like that?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Chair, the Martin County Board of Education will enter closed session subject to advice from the attorney pursuant to N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A1 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under GS 115C-319 and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20 U.S.C. 1232G and N.C. General Statute 115C-402. The board will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staffs or agents concerning the terms of the contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in N.C. General Statute 143-318.11A5.
Second? And properly moved and seconded to go into closed session, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Closed session granted.
Okay, well we think to remain and we are back in open session and first action item is need a motion to approve personnel.
So move second.
Got it. Got it, Ms. Sherry. Okay, been properly moved to second to approve personnel. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Nay. So we got a six to one. Superintendent's recommendation for contract renewals, all in favor, please indicate by saying, I mean, I need a motion.
Some of.
I'm moving too fast. Got a motion, second.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Sherry got it. Been properly moved to second it to approve the recommendations for contract renewals, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carried. Need a motion for the superintendent's recommendation for non-renewal contracts.
Some moved.
We didn't, I mean.
Cause we didn't have none.
We, we heard from Personnel Direct that was N A. Okay. And need a motion regarding the closed minutes.
So move.
And so move to.
And keep them closed.
Keep them closed.
Okay, second.
Second.
Alright, we probably moved the second to approve the closed minutes but keep them closed. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carried. We will now, any comments? No public comments, no board comments? Dr. White, no comments? Alright, just be reminded of our first inaugural graduation is on June the sixth. Our board work session is on June twenty-sixth and, I'm sorry, what time is?
Graduation.
Six thirty.
It's gonna be at six.
The graduation.
Six thirty. So it is at six thirty but I hope I'm not out of order. There will be security so we need to get there.
Yes.
Because we will have to go through the metal detectors. And then our July meeting, cause of the holiday will be July fourteenth. I do want to bring to everyone's attention that it was announced earlier that we do have the bullying event. And so put that on your calendar and I wrote down June nineteenth. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
They're properly moving the second to adjourn at eight fifty-eight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Meeting adjourned.